Welcome to City Hall. It's six o'clock. This is our October 1st meeting. I want to welcome everyone here tonight. Before we start the night's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilman Rick Mahalovich, and please join him in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. As we prepare to conduct the business of the city, let's pray for guidance to make decisions that are in the best interest of our citizens. Furthermore, as we approach the eve of the 100th anniversary of professional fire service for the citizens of Jefferson City and the protection of our treasured state of Missouri resources, people, and buildings, let us remember the sacrifices made by our fire department specifically and public service officials in general. Amen.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll call the meeting to order with roll call, please.
Bray?
Present.
Carroll, here. Henry?
Here.
Lubert?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Here.
Pope?
Here.
Crather?
Here.
Schulte?
Here.
Scribner?
Here.
Weber?
All right, we have a quorum. Next on the agenda tonight, first of all, we have minutes and reports that have been filed here at City Hall, and include the Planning and Zoning Commission, Board of Electrical Examiners, the USS Jefferson City Submarine Committee, and the Council Committee on Administration. If you would like to serve on our boards or commissions, you can do so by contacting Gail Strope or going to our city website, which is jeffcitymo.org. Next, we'll have Council Committee reports, starting with the Admin Committee chaired by Carrie Carroll.
Thank you. The Administration Committee met last week, and we discussed the Housing Authority's report on smoking in the Housing Authority property. And we also did appointments, which will be on this evening's council agenda. And our next meeting is October 24th at 8:00 a.m. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Carrie. Moving on, Finance Committee, which is chaired by Sean Schulte.
Thank you, Mayor. The Finance Committee met on Tuesday, September 25th. The following items were discussed: Report and discussion of the sales tax and lodging tax reports; report given by Piper Jaffray, the city's financial advisor, on the status of sewer bonds and upcoming projects; received an overview of the city's employee benefit package; discussed the budget process and how we might improve that for next year; discussed the year-end process and deadline requirements; and discussed supplemental appropriations being introduced tonight. Our next meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, October 23rd, at 7:30 a.m. across the hall in the conference room. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Sean. Moving on to Public Safety, Dr. Brian Pope.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Committee met last Thursday. We received several reports from Chief Rennick and also Captain Senova from the Police Department. First of all, the chief of our firefighters reminded us of all of the events coming up this week regarding their centennial celebrations. Additionally, we received a couple of updates on the supplemental process of funding the additional items that have been added to their budget, and also an updated list on future projects for fire station maintenance. Moving on to the report from the Police Department, we were updated on the effectiveness of the new emergency sirens that were tested last week. Then, the City Council, our city attorney, presented a bill that we moved on now to the council regarding the update on storage and towing for vehicles within the city. That'll be coming to the council, I believe, at the next meeting. Thank you. Next meeting for Public Safety is November 1st.
All right, thank you, Dr. Pope. Moving on, Public Works and Planning Committee chaired by Bob Scribner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Public Works and Planning Committee met on September the 25th. Our agenda included a report on our airport consultant contract for mill and overlay and lighting. That project's coming up. I think it's about a $3.6 million project at Jefferson City Airport. Property transfer at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport, which is also to clear up an easement issue. Safe routes to school and transportation enhancement project list. Matt Maresh presented us with four suggestions that staff has for projects that might be funded by this funds from the safe school and transportation funding. 2013 Community Development Block Grant Action Plan presentation was made. Coal Junction wastewater project update. We're about ready to start or to let the bid on that. Electronic committee packets. We're going to be, our committee's going to be utilizing this device for our committee materials. And also a recycling update and an Inspection Division report by Janice McMillan. We had a nice agenda this time.
All right, thank you, Bob. Appreciate everything that people do.
I guess I should say the next meeting will be October the 18th across the hall. Sorry about that, 7:30.
And I have an addition here. Under Liaison Reports, Larry Henry has a report on JCTV.
Yes, JCTV actually met last week, September 27th. Those discussions primarily focused around the new budget, what that's going to entail for them. There were some questions brought up by some committee members in regards to the contract with the city at this point. So because of that, we're going to have another additional meeting here coming up Thursday on the 5th. And I think our city administrator will be joining us for that. That'll be at 2:00 p.m. here at City Hall to discuss how they move forward with that. And we'll go from there.
All right, Larry, thank you very much. Appreciate all the work that the council does on all these committees and the people that serve on them. Next, we have appointments by the mayor. We have an appointment to Planning and Zoning, Transportation and Traffic, and also a Board of Adjustments. At this point in time, we would entertain a motion to approve all of those at one time.
It's been moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion at all? Roll call? Okay. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. That passes. Next, call on Chief Roger Schrader to introduce us to some new policemen that are joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is my privilege tonight to introduce you to two police officers who began employment today, as a matter of fact. I'd like to ask them to stand, please. First is Officer Brian Festog, and he is to my immediate left, or, and your left. Officer Festog's originally from Colorado. He received an associate's degree in criminal justice from Trinidad State College and a bachelor's degree in liberal studies from Hammond LaGrange. Officer Festog graduated from the Law Enforcement Training Institute at the University of Missouri in April of this year and is obviously post-licensed. He was previously employed as a corrections officer with the Cole County Sheriff's Department. Brian also was employed by the Red Miners Kale Basketball Team and played professional basketball in Europe in 2011. And we welcome Brian. Next, to his left is Michael Iry. Officer Iry is from the mid-Missouri area. I know he lives in Monatah County presently. He received an Associate of Arts degree from Columbia College. He graduated from the Law Enforcement Training Institute again at the University of Missouri in 2008 and is post-licensed. Officer Iry served in the United States Marine Corps for four years, attaining the rank of corporal, and is currently a reserve in the Missouri Army National Guard. Michael was previously employed for three and a half years, most recently, as a police officer with the Columbia Missouri Police Department. So we welcome both gentlemen. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, gentlemen, welcome to the city. Brian and Michael, you've joined one of the finest departments around, and welcome to the city. We wish you a lot of years of service with our department. Want to say hi to your family, too. Any council comments? I think they're trying to say, "Welcome." All right, moving on to presentations from staff, consultants, and invited guests. Before we do this, I have an addition to the agenda. Want to call on Drew Hilbert, our city councillor. He has a new employee that he wants to introduce us this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Actually seated behind me is Jeremy Coover, and he started as our Associate City Attorney last Monday. Wanted to introduce him to you. You'll be seeing him around in committee meetings and around the building, no doubt. He's originally from Clinton, Missouri, and out of law school, worked in a law firm at the lake that represented several lake communities. Since that time, for the last couple of years, he's worked for the 13th Judicial Court. He's got a wife named Kira and shares that name with my daughter, so that was a plus for him, I guess. And he's got a son due in two weeks, so he'll be missing in action. I'll take off a couple of days for that. Didn't want to get trouble his wife. He's excited to be here, and we're excited to have him. So if you see him around the hall, say hi and ask him, feel free to ask him any questions you have.
Jeremy, welcome. Any comments from staff? Just like to tell you that we've had very good luck with city councillors. The one that we have now is a little bit better than the other one that we used to have. I was teasing, because it was Nathan, obviously, but welcome. I'm sure you'll do a good job, and welcome to the city.
Thanks, brother.
Okay, moving on, next, we have presentations, and we're going to do this with Bill Lockwood. Bill has the annual Parks and Rec Annual Report. Bill, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. My pleasure this evening, on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Commission, to formally present to you something that a lot of you got a preview of a couple of weeks ago at an event. But as you're aware, the city charter requires annually that the Parks and Recreation Commission make a report to the council stating the condition of their trust overall in the park system. In front of you this evening, I've distributed copies of the written report. A lot of this is maybe a little bit more detail than we were able to cover in our live session a couple of weeks ago, but try to recap various trends in participation, various programs, number of the improvements that were made throughout the park system this year, and also just a recap of our overall financial picture and condition as affirmed by our city's audit. A lot of information before, I don't want to take a lot of time tonight to go through it, but just to invite you, if you do have any questions that may have come up from our meeting a couple of weeks ago or from looking at this report, please feel free to give me a call or any of the commission members. I think it's safe to say that all of your commission members are proud to serve in their capacities and feel that their work is extremely important to the future as well as the present of our city, and thank you for that opportunity. Be happy to answer any questions now, if you have any.
Any questions for Bill? Rick?
I want to commend you on an excellent report, and I'm especially pleased at the report, and I don't know how to say that word, but it's National Park and Recreation Database.
Yes, this is something that we're just getting into this year on a preliminary basis. It's a national database that's been set up by our national professional organization. It's the purpose of gathering information to allow communities to draw comparisons between themselves and other communities of their size, their number of acres of parkland, number of employees, budget size, those sorts of things. So the information we got out of it this year is somewhat interesting, but I think each year we continue to participate in that and build up that database. It's going to give us more valuable information. I think if you look at what I included in the report, that we fare pretty well, I think, in a number of categories, which is always nice to hear. You never know quite how you stack up against others. Of course, it's a little bit like comparing apples and oranges in many ways, but this tries to put it on as much of a standardized basis as possible. I'm confident as time goes by, we'll be able to get a lot more good information from that.
Any other questions for Bill? All right, Bill.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. You guys did a great job. Okay, next, Nathan Nicholas. Think you have some guests here with us?
Yes, and the first one I would like to introduce is Melanie Green, who is here representing the USS Jefferson City crew. And we've got the crew that's coming in soon, and I think she's going to tell us about all of those events.
Welcome, Melanie.
Normally, I'm not here. We have people that are supposed to make committee reports, but we haven't had anybody with us for a while. So I just wanted to let you know that coming up in October this month, the 17th through the 22nd, and this is Mike Rhino, another committee person, decided to join me tonight.
Mike, good seeing you.
They will be coming in to visit the city. I had Phyllis give you all an itinerary, and this is, it's not set in stone. Sometimes we add, sometimes we delete, but as you can see, they're going to be very busy. Unfortunately, we couldn't bring them in during a city council meeting. You get the Navy when you get the Navy. You just don't have a choice. The main thing that I am here tonight for is I'm hoping that all of you got the invitation for the 20th anniversary of our commission, or the commissioning of our submarine, which is going to be on Friday night, October the 19th, be at the Capitol Ritz. I'm hoping very much you can attend. If for some reason you can't, we are, as you see on the agenda, there is something planned at the American Legion on Monday night, which is the 22nd. Navy Ship Five's going to provide pizzas for the guys, and if you have a moment to come by, they'll be there probably till 7:00, 7:30, 8 o'clock at night. And I'm sure they would love to be introduced to you and meet you and talk to you. But once again, I hope you all can come to the anniversary dinner and meet them in person. We're hoping to make it a good celebration. Do you have anything to add?
No.
(laughing)
Just covered the Navy Club, so that's...
Yeah, I did. Do you have any, I'm sorry. Go ahead. I was going to ask, are there any questions?
That's what I was going to ask, too. We're thinking the same. I have a comment. Thanks for all that you guys do, and I would invite the entire community to come out and say hi to the people of that submarine. Darrell and I were lucky enough, maybe three years ago, Phyllis, do you remember? Three or four? I know when I look at the picture, my girls were younger, and I didn't have a beard, so it looked like I'm about 12. But we were able to go on the USS Jefferson City while we were in San Diego, and it was a very neat tour, and I would ask anyone from this area when they're out and about to look into that. Appreciate everything you guys are doing. We'll see you at the dinner about four.
We have a new commanding officer, Brian Dixon, and this will be his first time to Jefferson City. And if he's anything like the other commanding officers, if he gets to serve on board for three terms, he will probably come to Jefferson City for three terms.
Great. All right. Thank you very much. Any other questions, guys, or comments?
Thank you.
Thanks for what you're doing. Appreciate it. Nathan, next.
Yes, next, we have...
Welcome, Rick.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you, council. Appreciate it very much. I'll keep this very brief, and I know my cohorts say that's not possible for me, and I know Bill knows that, too, from working together years ago. The Ameren Missouri and Missouri Wide Utility Alliance have partnered with Westinghouse, as you know, to apply for $452 million in federal Department of Energy matching funds. I had hoped to come here tonight and tell you the good news, that our alliance had been granted some or all of that money. We thought by the end of September, we would have that announcement. Now we're hearing it's possibly going to be after the November election, before we hear. So we are still very hopeful that Missouri will receive all or a portion of that $452 million. As you may know, the matching fund, Westinghouse, Kansas City Power and Light, Ameren Missouri, Empire District, all of the co-ops, all of the municipal utilities, and Associated Electric have partnered together. So if we're granted, say, $200 million of that, we would match that with $200 million to go forward with the development of small modular reactors in Missouri. We're looking to build, apply for a license, and build up to five small modular reactors at the Callaway site, where the Callaway Energy Center sits today. Really, this is a story about jobs, and I know you guys hear that a lot, but that's what Westinghouse, in large part, chose Missouri for. They said you have a good workforce. We would like to get not only these five SMRs built in the state, but possibly have Missouri become a manufacturing center to make these modular reactors and ship them all over the world by rail, truck, or barge. So it's a golden opportunity, we think, for Missouri. Westinghouse came to Ameren, Missouri in January of this year and said, "We want to partner with the state because you have a good workforce. You have almost 28 years of operating experience at the Callaway Energy Center today, a good, safe, reliable track record." They were very impressed with that. They were really impressed with this statewide alliance. You don't see many states where you have municipals, investor-owned, and cooperatives working together for really a statewide energy policy. They're also very impressed with our universities, both the research reactor at Mizzou and Columbia and the research reactor at Missouri S&amp;T and Rala. They saw that, and the nuclear engineering programs associated with those as a major draw. So, and statewide support, honestly, from local to county to statewide and U.S. elected officials, great support from Governor Nixon in our state. As you know, Senator Kehoe and Representative Riddle were great champions for some of the legislation we've had in the last two or three sessions. And finally, we had a couple of economists put pencil to paper on this, and we said, "What is the largest export Missouri has today coming from our state?" Well, if you aggregate all of the agricultural products, which include corn, soybeans, cattle calves, poultry, it's about $7.3 billion a year in total exports, just agriculture aggregated, all of those different forms, $7.3 billion. The economists say if we were to get manufacturing for SMRs in Missouri, it would be at least three times that, $25 billion to possibly $37 billion a year. So a very huge economic boon for our state. So not just jobs that created from, would be created by building SMRs for our customers' benefit, but certainly to have manufacturing that would, again, ship these components around the world. So that's kind of a quick update that I have for you tonight.
Rick, can I ask you this? When will that announcement be made?
We're hearing, and again, there's no firm decision from the DOE. We understand the decision has been made, but not announced yet. So it may be all the way up to the president's cabinet level, but we are hearing now from the rumor mill, probably post-November election.
After the election. That's when someone guessed the other day that they'd probably wait, because between us and, is it Tennessee, or where's the other one?
Yeah, I didn't go into that, but very briefly, there are really four competitors vying for this $452 million. Washington State has a vendor named New Scale Power and a very small modular reactor, 45-megawatt reactor. They are also looking, in addition to Washington State, New Scale is looking at South Carolina, and so is a company called Holtech. They have 160-megawatt reactor design. So South Carolina may be our most serious competition. And then Babcock &amp; Wilcox has a very good design, I believe, at 180 megawatts. They have partnered with TVA, the Tennessee Valley Authority in Tennessee. And then the Westinghouse design is 225 megawatts. So we have the largest of the four SMR designs, is the Westinghouse design at 225 megawatts, which is about one-fifth the output of today's current Callaway plant.
So a reactor that size would do what size city?
Right now, the Callaway plant provides about 700,000 customers with energy, so about one-fifth of that. So, you know, 75,000 to 150,000 customers, somewhere in that range.
Okay.
Part of the strength of this alliance is that even if Ameren, Missouri applies for the license to build these, it will not be solely, it'd be owned by Ameren, Missouri, but the megawatts would be shared based on cost input across those other utilities. Associated Electric and many others are in the same situation. Ameren, Missouri is looking at aging infrastructure, replacing aging coal plants perhaps with small modular reactors.
Okay. Any questions of the council? Mr. Lubert?
Would it be built at Callaway if it's to be built in Missouri?
That's the plan right now, Bill, is that we would build up to five of these. The application would be for up to five of them to be adjacent to the existing Callaway Energy Center in Callaway County.
And the manufacturing, if that happens?
There is a statewide coalition. Actually, there are two task forces that have been formed. Governor Nixon has formed an SMR task force led by Presiding Commissioner of Boone County, Dan Atwill. He's chairing four other commissioners on that committee. There's a larger statewide readiness committee that's made up of economic developers from all corners of the state. And so to answer your question, we're really trying to make this not be so competitive between St. Louis versus Kansas City, Springfield versus Central Missouri. We want Missouri to win. So all of these economic developers are working together for the good of Missouri to hopefully put up a good defense against South Carolina or some of these other states.
Any other questions for Rick? Bob, go ahead.
Are they to be, I know they're to be built in Missouri, but are they also to be used in Missouri, or maybe one or two of them, or all of them?
The first five that we're talking about would be built in Missouri for the benefit of Missouri customers. So certainly, if they're on the Ameren, Missouri property out in Callaway County, our customers would be some of the recipients of that energy. But again, depending on if Associated Electric says we need 200 megawatts or 400 megawatts, and they pay for that much of the construction of those plants, then they would get the equal amount of energy out of it. So it could go to customers all over Missouri.
So those five units would be built and remain, well, I'm sorry, be built and remain in that location. They're built to be permanently housed there?
Yes. The manufacturing, they would be modular shipped around, but the permanently installed ones, at least at our site, would be put underground. They have a steel containment dome, and they would be buried underground. So your reactor, your pressurizer, your steam generators, and even your fuel, used fuel, would all be underground.
And then any built in the future would be shipped to wherever they were to be?
Yeah, and that's really one of the criteria the DOE was looking at, is what is the global market for these? And they see China and India and many developing nations still in great need of electricity, and they, Westinghouse certainly hopes to be the first to market with their design, and that we would manufacture these in Missouri and ship them all around the world.
Thank you.
All right, Rick, thanks for being here. Appreciate your staff being here, too. They do a great job. Work with them quite a bit in my business as an electrical distributor. We just had to keep our fingers crossed and hope for the best.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We'll keep you posted.
All right, thank you very much. Next, we have on the agenda Fire Chief Rennick for telling us about the 100th anniversary coming up. Chief?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Hopefully, everyone knows about the centennial, the events coming up this week. Again, the gala is Thursday evening. Tickets are necessary for that. They can be obtained at Samuel Tuxedo. They can be contacted, Fire Administration, and we'll track them down for you. The events on Friday evening would be on the south side on Dunkland Street, kind of a street party, if you will. And then Saturday is the grand parade through downtown with fire trucks having what we call a muster, a gathering around the Capitol Building. At this point, I'm told there's 120, 125 trucks already committed to being here. I think one of our councilmen has indicated that he's going to be riding there, Mayor, so you might watch out. But...
Is that you, Rick? Are you riding in one, or do you have one?
(inaudible)
Really? Cool. Well, the chief has requested that I ride in my vet, so that's what I'll have to ride in, I guess.
Anyway, the Sunday event will be at our training center, and it's more of an open house, up close and friendly to some of the techniques that firefighters use, cake and punch, that kind of thing. At the end, some games for the kids.
All right, Bob, thank you, and thank you for your leadership. We definitely appreciate it. What a shining moment for our city and especially for your department this week. Any questions for Chief Rennick? Moving on to number 12, we have four people signed up to talk about specific bills and resolutions. You will have five minutes each, without exception. Ask you to come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record. And first, we have Brandon Swires.
Swires.
Okay. Is that your daughter?
That's my daughter-in-law.
She's very cute. I was telling the clerk that. Is she teething?
Yes.
I saw the little teething ring there.
And the drool, and all that good stuff.
Well, welcome, Brandon.
I have some presentations.
Oh, okay.
I think there's enough there. If not, I'll just let you get some over here. This, I guess, is about parking on Norman Drive. Are you familiar where First Student's at, and FedEx is right above it on Norman Drive? Okay, what we have is, it was proposed that the entire west side of Norman Drive be marked as no parking, and we've been working closely with FedEx to revise that plan to just the west side until, up until where the storage units are at. You'll see on this diagram on the left, there's a driveway that goes into the brown storage units over there, past the Ameren UE building. The problem has been that we have, between 6:00 a.m. and 6:50 a.m., we have roughly 60 buses and 12 monitors that leave within that 50-minute timeframe. So we've got 70 to 72 employees trying to park in our lot and along Norman Drive on both sides. Well, the trucks come in around 7:45 or 8 o'clock for FedEx, and they were having a problem pulling down and backing back into the FedEx docks, which is just kind of where the northeast-southwest designation would be here. That's kind of like where the FedEx dock would be. The proposal to make the entire west side no parking, I think, would definitely be a detriment to the employees, you know, that don't have assigned parking with the volume of buses that we have coming in and out. With the volume of buses that we have coming in and out between 6:00 and 6:50, there being no sidewalks down Norman Drive for, to take away, I think there's like 12 to 15 parking spots, space for 12 to 15 vehicles that would be eliminated by making the entire west side not parking, no parking. That would require the employees to park on the east side all the way up from First Student on past FedEx almost to Industrial Drive. And, you know, like I said, there's a lot of, there's a lot of buses coming in and out. It's dark, 70-plus vehicles going up the street, and you have 70 to 80 employees walking down the street in the dark. You know, it really could cause some problems. So we've partnered with FedEx, and we've come up with this design. We've also decided if we needed to, we could provide the painting along the curb. No parking on the entire west side from the storage unit driveway up. So that would allow FedEx to, once they backed their trucks in, pull the trucks out with no problems, not having any vehicles. We've already implemented placing cones 36 feet down from the driveway. You see there, it says 36 feet from drive. We've already did a test of that. We put the cones 36 feet down, measured. The trucks are having no problems backing in. They're able to pull the nose of the truck forward enough and then back into their docks. So what I'm hoping you guys will decide is to not just make the entire west side of that street no parking. I mean, it's really going to cause problems with our employees trying to park and safely walk down to the buses when it's dark and all that stuff's going. Because there's also no street lighting. There's no, there's one street light at the very end of Norman Drive that flickers on and off randomly, but there's no sidewalks, there's no street lighting. So this suggestion is actually working. Right now, it's working with us, it's working with FedEx. So this would be our suggestion to you when you vote on it next week. Any questions, comments?
Councilman Prather, you're the liaison to that committee, are you not?
Yes. The representative we have from FedEx is Tim Shepherds, and I'd like to actually hear from him if he's for this change. And again, I'd like to hear, of course, city staff's report once more.
And we'll have that report here in probably 20 minutes if you want to hang around. And by the way, we're just introducing the bill tonight, so we won't be voting on it for another couple of weeks.
Couple of weeks, okay. All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much for coming. That's the American way. Enjoy your family. Looks like your little one's about ready to take a nap.
Yeah, hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have Bob Bolt, who's here to talk about 2012-76, the Proposed Noise Ordinance. Good evening, Bob, and welcome.
My name is Bob Bolt, resident 12 Jackson, Jeff City. I'm here to speak about the proposed changes to the noise ordinance, and I think specifically in relation to the Prison Brew's audio that's been coming out of their establishment. One of the things I'm concerned about is the level of permissible decibels that are going to be allowed for commercial, industrial, residential zoning. As far as I understand, it's 85 decibels, peaking to 95, between what's regarded as daylight, which I'm not sure, that's, I think, 8 o'clock until 10 o'clock or 7 o'clock until 10 o'clock. Anyway, and it can go, I guess, 80 to 90 during evening hours, 10 o'clock to 6 o'clock, something like that. In the proposal, there's a graph of permissible decimal levels, which is list 86 decimal levels to our exposure maximum. Beyond that, there can actually cause health problems, hearing loss, things like that. So I'm here to question the permissible use of 86 decibels for that ordinance. I'm a little concerned, I'm not actually a resident of that neighborhood. I visited in the neighborhood and I was a patron of the establishment. One thing is if it's, if an establishment requires something like Prison Brew, they have some very interesting music, and it's a nice venue for music. It's not that they have to have the music on the patio where a lot of people will hear it in the summertime. It can be all taken indoors, they have air conditioning in the summertime, heating in the evening. That can all be handled inside and probably not causing very much disturbance to the neighborhood. So there is a remediation on that. One of the things I'm also concerned about is the broader community. If this ordinance is accepted citywide, it could create problems for other neighborhoods. Most of the neighborhoods in Jeff City have some ordinance in terms of commercial-industrial. There are stores or shops, warehouses, things like that, that are close to residential areas. And there is a remediation that's listed in the proposal. It says, "Maintenance of any device, instrument, vehicle, machinery in violation of the provision and which causes discomfort." I would insert "or" causes discomfort in there. Annoyance to reasonable person, normal sensitivities, which endangers health, comfort, repose, health of the people. The health, comfort level of the people, the commercial people or the residential people in the neighborhood, I would say is independent of the actual noise level. I mean, if you have a rock band that's playing at like 80 decibels, that can be a distraction to the neighborhood. The idea is to try to get that sound level as low as possible, especially with the hours up until 10 o'clock. Usually, 8 or 9 o'clock, kids are doing homework, they're getting ready to go to bed, you're trying to calm them down. If you're close to an establishment like Prison Brew's that's playing loud music, it's pretty hard to do that. So that, this would classify as a, you know, an annoyance. The remediation for that would be either by court, by competent court, or by police. Part of it is, you don't want it to be a regulating sound in a neighborhood through a court order or through policemen. That should be something that should happen initially. So that's pretty much my concern on it. I'm not sure exactly in terms of the enforcement. I understand the policeman has to come out with an actual dB meter, decimal level meter, and read it for like 30 minutes, which seems excessive. You know, I think that's the kind of case where common sense should prevail. If there's a complaint, policeman should come out, and I would trust his judgment to determine whether the sound is annoying or difficult. So those are my concerns. Michael Brownstein, my friend who actually lives in the neighborhood, also has comments that can fill in any blanks that I've left. I appreciate the chance to talk to you all. Thanks.
Bob, I have a quick question for you. I think it's 80 decibels is what Nathan just told me, is that correct? Is it currently in the proposed ordinance? Is that right?
I...
85, okay.
Eighty-five.
What would be, what would be a good level then in your eyes if 85 is too high?
I would say something closer to what's normally allowed in strictly residential areas. It depends a little, you know, if you have a printing press or a machine shop or something like that that's operating 8 to 5, I think a neighborhood can kind of get used to that. I think it's more the, we're probably addressing more the problem connected with Prison Brew's, which is music, which is a little different level of distraction.
So you don't have a particular level that you think it should be at?
I would say probably around 80. Michael has investigated this a little more.
Okay.
You can probably ask him.
Thanks for coming. Any other questions, Bob? Thank you very much for being here.
Great, thanks.
Next we have, as introduced, Michael Brownstein. Michael is here to talk to us first about 2012-75, which is about flora, and 2012-76, which is noise. Michael, first, the clock's running. You're on for flora first. Go ahead.
I took two of my seconds. My name is Michael Brownstein from 320 Ash Street. I live across from Prison Brew's. Both Rick Prather is my councilman and Carrie Carroll, a councilwoman I've had words with in the past, but I feel is a very committed, responsible businessperson in Jeff City. I'm saying that because they're both examples of responsible businessmen. I've been in Mr. Prather's business, I've been in Ms. Carroll's business. I feel a commercial business owner has responsibility to their business and their patrons, but they also have a responsibility to their neighbors and to the community. And I think both of these people are good examples of that. On the other hand, some people are not responsive to a neighbor or to the community. When Prison Brew's first came to my street, it was owned by the Stanleys and another person. The Stanleys made it known to us that they would never put music on their patio because there was neighbors and it was against the sound ordinance. The sound ordinance today, the current one, if you could hear music 50 feet away, you've got to stop it. Okay? That's how it's supposed to be. The minute she bought the place, the owner bought the place from the Stanleys, music went on the patio. Furthermore, I did not know the owner of Prison Brew's was one of my elected representatives until I read in the News Tribune on August 23rd that she asked for the deadline for daytime to go from 7:00 to 9:00, to 7:00 to 10:00. She, so that's in our proposal. I didn't get a chance to say I want it from 7:00 to 8:00, which I think is what it should be. Prison Brew's is built across the street from a large apartment complex where a lot of kids live. When she blasts the music, they don't go to sleep. I got a letter from a woman named Debbie Ross who said this. She lives a block away from Prison Brew's, not on my street, but a block away. She said, "I have two problems with it, the sound ordinance. I do not think the new proposed hours should be from 7:00 to 10:00. I think they should be from 7:00 to 8:00." Her second issue is noise. Even with Prison Brew's doors shut, she says, "I can still hear the noise. It wakes my youngest one up. A sound level of 85 decibels is way too loud. This doesn't make any sense." Now, back to me. I did some research. There's a site called Dangerous Decibels. It says, "If a sound reaches 85 dBs or stronger, it can cause permanent damage to your hearing." How long do you have to hear the sound? Another site, which is called, "How long does it take before you get deaf?" Okay? It says, "At 80, it takes eight hours, but this thing's 85, could be as loud as it wants." At 86, it's two hours. At 92, it's 30 minutes, and this could spike to 95. Okay? And it could spike to 95 for 15 minutes. But it could do it all the time, and I have to live in this block. At 98, this suppose, which it might happen, because I usually complained, I called the policeman, reached 100 on my machine. It says seven minutes before you have a problem with your hearing. According to Todd Ricketts, who's a professor of hearing and speaking at Vanderbilt in Nashville, Tennessee, said 85 is a threat to when hearing damage begins. And he said, "Federal work standards stipulate that sounds exceeding that level should not be heard at all." Carrie Carroll and Rick Prather are responsible commercial business owners, and they would know, I don't believe in my heart that they would knowingly ever ask this community to cause deafness in children and adults. All right. I want to state another fact. When the music is on the patio, it doesn't come straight out as pure sound, it bounces off walls. By the time it reaches our ears and starts shaking, and it does shake our windows, it's noise. Simple. It irritates all of us. Okay. I have police reports here. I asked the police department under the Sunshine Request for any noise complaints about Prison Brew's over time. And this is only a little package of it because the woman told me there were so many of them, how much money did I have to get? I was ready to put out $100 to get all of them. She said I needed more than that. Phyllis, the city clerk, was very nice and generous to help me get more of them. So between the city and, this is just a handful of problems, okay? I only have 48 seconds, so I got to do this quick. The other issue was, on May 24, 2012, Rebecca Bushman called the police because it was bothering her mother, her grandmother, who's sickly. It was bothering her a lot. The police came. The owner of Prison Brew's said, "We'll take the music inside, and I promise I will not play it outside again," this is in the police report, "until the zoning is changed." We were fine with this. No one signed the complaint, everything was good. August 12th, I mean, August 10th, 2012, there's music blasting out real loud. The same grandmother left the neighborhood to go somewhere else. I have her letter. I can't read it, she's only have 10 seconds. But she left in a nervous wreck. Okay? The owner of Prison Brew's broke her promise. The music was way past 85, I only called it 100. This was not right. I wanted to say one more thing. When the noise, one sentence, one more sentence, please.
Go ahead, Michael. We have a new audio, it sounded like we were at a hockey game or something.
Okay, let me just do this real quick.
I didn't know that.
Okay. You've all heard the saying that says, "First, they came for the Jews, but I did nothing because I wasn't Jewish." Here's mine. "When the noise first came to Ash Street from Prison Brew's, I did nothing because I lived on the west side of town. When the noise came from the cafe a mile away, I did not care. When the noise came to be one block from my house, because of this new sound ordinance got passed, I was deaf, so it didn't bother me at all." Okay? And by the way, the mission has become a good neighbor now because they closed their door. We don't hear their music anymore.
All right. Michael, thank you for being here.
I'm done, thank you.
I'll give you a chance to catch your breath. Any questions of Michael on 2012-76? Dr. Pope?
So, Michael, this would be more satisfactory if the time, you feel 10 o'clock is too late, but 8:00 PM would be satisfactory?
Well, the neighbors who have children, that woman who talked to me, she has young kids, and she says, "They'll go to bed at 8:00, except for when Prison Brew's is playing their music real loud. Then it's hopeless." Okay? I think 8:00 is good, but I've told everybody, we'll compromise. We'll meet in the difference, we'll meet the difference and make it 9:00, because I talked to Drew about this, and he said, "Construction workers want to work till 9:00." So I have no problem with it. So 9:00 was a compromise. My people who I talked to were up to doing. Okay?
Okay. My second question for you is, we have it listed then, for instance, between, basically from a residential point of view, the nighttime decibel level would be 55. You're going to compromise from 9:00 on at 80 decibels? Or do you want that changed to another number?
I want everything changed. I want, what we did, we surveyed lots of municipalities this size city and larger, and no one, anyone, had 85 anywhere, because the government says it's not right.
So what number are you proposing?
I want 65.
55?
65. 55 for residential's fine, 65 for industrial, commercial, and we could spike to 75. That's fine.
Day and night?
Day and night's fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I think Mr. Bray had a follow-up or question?
Mr. Brownstein, I wanted to clarify for you that on the, I'm actually probably the responsible person for having the band outside on August the 12th. I was, been working on the noise ordinance with city staff, and I knew that the owner of Prison Brew's was going to have a band that night, that was a Friday night, and it was a nice night, and I asked if she would be willing to put the band outside so that staff could come by and take readings on it. The staff had been taking readings all over town for all kinds of sounds and noises and circumstances and all kinds of businesses. And I thought it'd be useful to take readings at Prison Brew's with the live band outside. So the owner did that at my request to help us, help the city get readings that would help make for a good sound ordinance, noise ordinance. So do not blame the owner of Prison Brew's. I asked her to do that for the noise ordinance.
Okay, but am I allowed to ask a question of him?
Actually, no, is what Nathan just told me.
Okay. Again, okay.
All right. Any other questions of Michael? Mr. Scribbler?
I guess when someone talks to me in terms of decibels, that doesn't mean anything to me unless I have some idea of what an equivalent sound, you know, might be at, do you have any idea when you say you want 55 or 65 or spiking to 75?
55 for residential, and it could spike to 65, because lawnmowers are going to make more noise than 55. I want to go, I want 75 to be the maximum spiked situation, okay? But if you go to a Rolling Stone concert, according to my research, it's 105. If you're in a Rolling Stone concert, sitting near the front, it's 105. Back in the day when we were younger, and when you, you know, I'm, when you were a kid and I was already, you know, ancient, old whatever, I went to Rolling Stone and I put the earplugs in my ears anyway, because it was that loud, okay? When the music comes off of Prison Brew's, it's not just loud, it comes bouncing, and it goes off walls and gets louder as it comes back together. And by the time it hits my house, the windows are shaken. All right? That's way too loud. Now, they took two readings, I'm sorry, I'm going to do what he said I can't do. They took a reading five feet away from Prison Brew's. what he said I can't do. They took a reading five feet away from Prison Brew's. So if here's Prison Brew's and here's the wall, and I'm on the other side of the street, it's not that bad. If I'm here by my house on the angle, it's terrifying. If I'm behind Prison Brew's, where they took the second reading, you hardly hear it at all. I mean, it's not terrible. We could deal with it, okay? It's that their band is patio, is facing this way, it's bouncing off all these walls and coming to my house and the house next to me. And the tenant in 314 Ash wrote a letter, I'm not 314, 320 Ash, saying she can't be bothered with this. I've already said it a number of times. And the person in 325 Ash, she just left. She had her car parked in front of the house. She was so nervous she couldn't park it right. We had to assist her to go to her neighbor's house. Okay, so I don't know. I went past what you asked me to do.
Follow-up, Bob?
Well, the only thing is, I just don't know how to create an equivalence here. I mean, I don't, I know that when the presentation was made to the committee, staff played sounds that, and used a decibel meter. Now, granted, it was in a closed room. There's not the echoing that you're talking about and so forth, but they played at 85, they played at 75, and at various levels, and the sound was not that loud at 85 decibels coming from a radio. But that doesn't mean that, I'm not saying it's not disturbing.
According to, I researched, 86 was dangerous to your hearing. That's when, 86 is when you started getting danger to your ears. Okay? 85 is one less. It spikes to 95. Okay? That's what you're allowing, okay? And 95, according to what I've read, is actually dangerous. And when it gets to 98, which it might go to, because I only called the policeman, it was 100 on my decibel meter, okay?
Sure.
Bob, I have some information that Nathan has given me. Where's this from, Nathan? Well, it's from the Place That Knows Everything. It's from AnswersYahoo.com. It's got a couple of things on here. A telephone dial tone, okay, is 80. City traffic is 85. Train whistle at 50, excuse me, at 500 feet is 90.
Yeah, I mean...
So, just to, just to give you a clue?
I'll give you a copy of the decibel charts that we've got, okay?
Sure.
All right, Michael.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other follow-up with Michael? Bob? I'm sorry, Brian. Okay, till we have that report? Okay. All right.
Okay. All right, thank you.
All right. Did you, were you also going to talk to us about Flora Drive?
Well, I was going to say this, but then I needed definitions today, and Phyllis was very helpful to me and gave me the definition, so I didn't need to anymore because...
Okay.
I was going to talk about if you're going to have a commercial area now and let these 85 decibels get in the way of 85. I don't know if a residential place wants to be it.
Are you talking about Flora Drive, or are you still talking about Prison Brew's? Or about the noise?
I was going to bring that you don't want to have a commercial zone someplace...
Oh, okay.
...next to a residential place if this 85 thing passes, because 95 is awful loud.
Okay.
If Rolling Stone concerts, 105 according to what I saw. Okay? All right, that's it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, moving on. Number four, I have Audrey Smolin. Is that correct, Audrey? Audrey's here to talk to us about 2012-76, the noise ordinance. Audrey, welcome. Hope you're having a good night.
Thank you. Audrey Smolin from 2006 Meadow Lane here in Jeff City. And I am going to speak a little more about the excess noise created by Prison Brew's. Now, I was, it was suggested that I not make this solely about Prison Brew's, and in fact, it does affect the entire city because of all the areas that are close, all the residences that are close to or inside of commercial zones. Prison Brew's, though, seems to be a favorite of the city. I'll just, I'm not saying it is, I'm just saying it does look that way. As far as the performance on August 10th, I was asked to come to Ash Street just to hear the music, and I came. And it was loud. It was loud. And the police were called, but they didn't ask the band to lower the volume or to move inside. There was a peace disturbance complaint filed, but I don't know what's become of that. Later, I found out that Mr. Schwartz did a decibel reading near there, and the meter registered at 79. And like was just discussed, the sound level limit under the proposed ordinance for daytime hours ending at 10:00 is 85, and the nighttime limit is 80. Decibel levels are measured on a logarithm, and so 85 decibels is actually five times louder than a noise registering at 80. So if this ordinance passes, apparently Prison Brew's could have a band playing till midnight at the same level that they had playing on August 10th. When I was told about where the proposed noise ordinance got their model from, it was told to me that it came from a city in Nebraska, but they couldn't remember which one, and I tried to find one. I didn't find one that had those same levels, but I did find others. And these are decibel levels from commercial zones in other cities around the U.S. And all these readings are taken at the, what they call the receiving property. Say somebody was complaining, it would be taken at their property. In St. Peters, Missouri, which is about the same size as Jefferson City, it allows a daytime limit not to exceed 71 decibels for more than 15 minutes, and not over 80 for more than two minutes in a commercial zone. Nighttime, it can't exceed 66 decibels for more than 15 minutes, and not over 75 for more than two minutes. As far as Nebraska, Lincoln, Nebraska, at all times in a commercial area, it can't go over 70. In Omaha, same thing for daytime is 70, 65 at night. In Edmonds, Washington, daytime, and I don't know why there's a difference, but in daytime in a commercial area, it's 60, 65, or 70, and nighttime levels are reduced by 10. And then there was just a model ordinance out on the web, and at all times in a commercial area, it's not to exceed 65 decibels. And it's not to exceed background sound level by more than 10 decibels during the day or 5 decibels during the night. And I didn't just pick out these sample ordinances because they had lower decibel levels. These were just the ones I found, the ones I came across. And I know that not long ago, Mr. Scrivner asked us to trust you all because you are the council. So we're trusting you to do what's right for the city and not have a favorite, maybe just because you like to go there. So that's all.
Any questions for Audrey? Thanks for coming. Oh, wait a second. Mr. Libert?
Do you have a background in audiology, or you have a lot of statistics and a lot of information there? Do you have a background in audiology?
No, I don't.
So you're just bringing in statistics and information from other cities?
I'm bringing in what's in their ordinances, yes.
And you're an attorney also, right?
I am.
Good. A great presentation. Any other questions, guys? All right. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, moving on to our next agenda item. We have the consent agenda. At this point in time, we would entertain a motion to approve. So it's been moved by Carrie, seconded by, it came from the Ricks, I wasn't sure which one, Rick Prather. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign, motion passes. No bids over $50,000. Next, we'll move in to bills introduced, 2012-74. Janice?